Hi Nate, thanks for joining. I'm glad you were able to make it.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to.
I know Beth and I were on the phone right before, so she's gonna be on in just, oh good, she's just connecting now in a minute or two.
Can you give me co-host access, Christine?
You should be set now, Beth.
Thank you so much.
Is this broadcasting as a webinar already?
It's recording, but I don't think we're broadcasting like on Facebook. So people have to join the Zoom. We do have 13 attendees.
So you probably won't get many autograph requests tonight, Nate, if that was your concern.
Definitely not.
And we're still waiting for a few more board members, right? Beth, I believe Ellen is planning on joining.
Ellen and Terry. You don't even have Quorum yet. Oh, they might be.
Hopefully not on the old link.
Yeah, I'll make sure that they're on the new link. They might not have checked their email.
Old link, I did have Abby cancel that, so people wouldn't be like stuck in a hey, the host hasn't started and be confused. So it should just say it's not working. So hopefully people have not had a problem. And I know we had some people register previously and I see two of the three people who previously registered. So I'm hoping our link change didn't cause too much of an issue.
Beth, just one sort of preview. I've got one slide to present. So appropriate time, we can make me a host and I'll pull it up.
Okay. Yeah, I will make sure that you, or Christine can make sure. Terry's working on getting in. And Ellen's working on it.
Nate, you look perplexed. And you're muted.
Yeah, I was just, I'm sorry, I was lost in thought.
You definitely looked like you were thinking deep thoughts.
I don't know if they were deep, they were just there.
Fair enough.
Kind of the nature of being stuck at home so much.
And Beth, I can always promote Ellen if she needs to join the registration, but that's probably longer because she has to register and then wait for the email to come through.
All right. So I know I had to get, I got a link and it kept telling me I didn't know what meeting I was talking about and Abby decided to send me a new one.
Yeah, I'm having Abby send Ellen a new one.
I was just able to go directly from that one.
Yeah, Terry, we had to change the link earlier today. So we canceled the old meeting, sent a cancellation, sent a new link and sent an email. But if it wasn't, it may have not varied in everything we sent you.
I'm happy to see everyone decided to come back from Christmas. Welcome to a new year.
All right. We, Ellen is, we're working on getting Ellen a link. But we have a couple minutes of, you know, my script and all that fun stuff that we can do while she's signing in. Um, so let's get this meeting started. It is 6:05 on January 4th, 2021. Today, we'll be conducting a school board meeting of the Amherst School Board. Before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As chairperson of the Amherst School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-4 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, www.sau39.org. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email A. Wallace, that's A.W.A.L.L.A.C.E@sau39.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we'll be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Finally, let's get started by taking a roll call attendance. When each person states their presence, please also state where they are and if anyone else is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Somebody is allowed to be in the room with you, we just need to know about it. So let's get started with Tom.
Tom is in his home office alone.
Terry?
Sorry, I had to unmute. I am home and I am in my home office with my husband, but he can't hear me because I'm on headphones.
He's there. That's the important part. Ellen?
I'm in my office alone.
Okay. And I am also at home and alone. All right. So let's get started. The first item on the agenda is a public input. If any member of the public wishes to speak, please use the digital raise your hand feature. And we will give you permission to talk and speak. So I'll wait a moment, give everybody that opportunity. Okay. So seeing nobody raising their hands, we will move on to the next item of topic, which is the discussion about our deliberative session and what our options are during this pandemic. And we will be, Nate Johnson, our district moderator, has been doing a lot of work with the other district moderators to figure out what our options are with all the details and things like that. They've worked and have a recommendation. So Nate, I know you want to share your screen. So if you aren't able to, oh, you should be able to.
Okay. So can you see the agenda?
Yes.
All right. So, and you can hear me, okay?
Yep.
All right. So just to give you a brief history, so supervisor, the administrator of the town, Steve Coughlin, the town moderator, and I met several times virtually and in person to talk through how to conduct the deliberative session for, actually to be the deliberative sessions for the upcoming town meetings. So the town meeting, the school district meeting, the high school meeting. And we came to consensus that it would be best that each unit of the town, because we're an SB2 town, adopt the same approach so that the voters aren't confused by it. And we had several different options to look at. And we came up with a recommendation for one that I'll present to you in a moment. Essentially, what we looked into was how we could have a deliberative session where voters could actually attend in person and do so safely, given the constraints. For the town and the high school warrant articles, it was assumed that much of what was discussed would not be, by both boards would not be controversial. And so a minimum of voters would likely attend those deliberative sessions. The Amherst School Board deliberative session is assumed, our assumption has been that because of the the bond warrant article or the two bond warrant articles, depending on what you actually put forward, that those will likely be controversial and so that there will be an increased attendance for that deliberative session. So what we wanted to, what we talked through was how to have that deliberative session safely. And the problem that we run into is that in order to allow voters to actually participate in the deliberative discussion, we have to control who has access to the meeting. So that it is in a, in a specific site that the registrars can actually ensure that those that speak in the meeting are in fact voters in the town. And that those who vote in the meeting, assuming that there will be some kind of vote in the meeting, set of votes are in fact registered voters. So with that constraint and assuming that given the controversy around bond issues in the past, we made a lot, some conservative assumptions about the numbers of people that we would be dealing with. And our assumption was that we could see upwards of 200 people on the deliberative session night. This is the Tuesday night in February, the first week of February. If that is the case, there are some constraints that we have. Let me show you the proposal. So the deliberative sessions will be the first, second and third, I believe ours is the second. I'm sorry, I was just the first. What we would like to do is to hold the deliberative session at the normal place, which is Sohys, Sohigan High School for Emerson, Sohigan, and at the normal time. What we, what we will do is use, as we had used to do in the past when, before SB2, is use the auditorium as the primary meeting place in which the moderator, me, the governing body, you all, and a minimum of staff, probably just the supervisor and one or two other people will be at the front of the room. And then we'll have admit into the primary, in the auditorium, as many voters as social distancing allows. And we believe that that number is about 100. We actually went through and walked through the space and we have figured out a way to to have adequate space between voters. That gets us to 100 people. Then we would, we actually found three other classrooms that we can use as overflow space, which has happened in the past. And each space would also be enough to hold about 25 people or so socially distanced. We then debated how we could actually have people, we don't, what we don't want to have is people running between each room and running to the auditorium to make a comment or to participate in a vote. What we would actually do is use Zoom as the visual and as the medium to allow people to interact. So it turns out that all of the rooms, classrooms in the space, including the auditorium, have projectors and have cameras for Zoom because of course, we've been using those facilities in order to teach students. We went and actually tested the concept and used, and just using the Zoom that the that the school has, the school district has. And it does in fact work. What we would have is, we'd have deputized moderators or deputy moderators in each room who would control the Zoom feed for that specific room. I, as the moderator at the front in the, in the school district meeting, would run the meeting essentially per normal, but using the feed from the other rooms as part of the discussion. And every time a, somebody wants to speak in another room, they are projected live on the screen in front of everyone and their voice carries through just fine. It's, it's like participating in Zoom, except they would physically be in the space. We would also have the ability, because of this, it would be effectively like a webinar. So we have the participants in a panel, which would be the, the three rooms, the four rooms, would add to the public that would allow people to actually watch what's going on. I just got a flash that my internet is unstable. Can you hear me? Okay. All right. So like this webinar today, there would be a public feed to people that are not actually participating or just watching. And then those that want to participate and comment and vote can do so in, at the actual physical location. Now, we've talked through a number of different logistical problems. For example, if there is a vote on a warrant article, we would need to move, it would presumably be a secret ballot vote. And it would actually, we would actually move the ballot box from room to room. So people don't, aren't milling around in the halls, that kind of, that kind of detail. The moderators and the administrators thought through as a group, all of the possible logistical wrinkles that we could run into. That allows us to carry out a true deliberative session, essentially following the same rules and the old format for the town meetings from before, when they actually did use to have overflow rooms with audio visual aids in between. Once the deliberative session is over, the warrant articles are in final, then we would just have the election day per normal, which we've had, we've now had four socially distanced elections. We've had no, no real problems with them. And we'd be able to go forward and essentially meet on the same dates, same times and go forward. So that is essentially the idea. We tested it. It, it works. We thought through every possible problem that we, that we could think of anyway. And I think it will work fine. The only wrinkle might be if, so we have one auditorium for 100 and three or actually four rooms that can fit about 25 each, that gets us to 200 people. If there are more than that that show up, we would have to, I would have to actually recess the meeting. And we, we have a, an alternate date, which is the Thursday after the third, I guess it'd be the fourth of February. And we would have to make accommodations for those that wanted to participate in person, but couldn't actually get into a socially distanced room. So that's the, that's really the only danger to the meeting as a sort of logistical problem. But that's essentially, you know, if that happens, then, then we can, we can roll with it. We can set up as many rooms as we need to, but we wouldn't be able to do it that night. Our plan is to, if this meets with your approval, I believe it's already been proposed and accepted by the board of selectmen. If this meets with your approval, we will obviously test this several days before the event, make sure that it works again. Unfortunately, fortunately, school will be in session on those days. So we can't set up the rooms and leave them for, for three or four days, but we will get in the practice of setting everything up. Obviously, I will show up very early and make sure everything is working before it happens. But, but that's basically it. That's our recommendation. And we think that this is probably the best solution, given the circumstances.
Thank you, Nate. So the board is going to have opportunities. I'm sure several of you have questions. Tom already has his hand up. So go ahead, Tom.
Just a kind of a two-part question, Nate. Number one, have we looked at using the gymnasium in creating?
Yeah, that was, that was, that was one of the first questions. The gym is not a good location for this because the, it's not wired for the connection that we need. And it's also quite remote from the rest of the spaces. We want to, we need to actually keep control of who is in the, who's, who is, who is in each room. That's the whole point of having it in person. So the auditorium, the choir room and several rooms just across the lobby from the the auditorium are the, are the intended rooms to be used. And that would give us control, control of the space. And there's a, there's a couple of other reasons, I can't remember off the top of my head, that, that shot down the gym as a, as a venue.
Well, and my next question was, are there additional classrooms in that area? Even if you had to expand it a little bit to, to have, say, eight classrooms ready to go in case you get the overflow, so you don't need to have people come back on another night. And then on the flip side to that, if you had to move them to another, they're not moving back and forth between rooms. So what would be the problem if they were located in another section of the school? They used a separate entrance or, you know, you just directed them there. You still have moderators in that room keeping control of it, you know, in their own little.
Yeah, we wanted, so, so the, the simple answer is we wanted to try and keep this as, as simple as we could. If, if, you know, 400 people show up, it's going to be a problem. So our hope is that that's not the number. But, you know, obviously that's, that's everyone's right to participate. So, you know, I, I can talk with, with Steve Coughlin about, you know, having eight rooms set up. It's just, it, it becomes increasingly hard. So one of the things that there's, I needed to deputize people to be the moderators. And there's restrictions on who I can deputize, I believe. So it's, it's, that's part of the problem, right? So.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my only concern is if you have 200 people or 300 people on the first night and then the second night you have it, you know, you go over the capacity again, how many nights can you, in theory, extend it?
Well, if, you know, if, if it's, if we have that problem, we'll, we'll, we'll make it so that there's no way that we can, we, we can't, we'll have enough rooms to cover it. Right? It's, it's just that we, we just don't know, right? And it may be that people won't show up because of their concerns or what have you. So we're kind of shooting in the dark. But the auditorium holds about 200 people in normal times. And, you know, we've had overflow on that in, on past bond issues. So who knows? But it's different.
Nate, I, I think one of the other reasons that the, the gymnasium is an issue is just because the acoustics.
Yeah, that's right.
The acoustics are, that's not workable. So.
And that, yeah, you're right. That's part, that was part of it too. So.
Yeah. Tom, I'm going to move on to Ellen because she also has her hand raised, but I can bounce back to you if you come up with anything else.
I don't mind waiting, Tom, if you have another question.
No, I'm, I'm good for right now. That was all I had.
All right. Thanks, Nate. Thanks, Beth. So I have some questions in terms of who is kind of in charge of the restrictions put in place. So will masks be required of everybody?
Yes.
And how will the school board administration, assuming we'll be on the stage in the auditorium, how will we be set up so we can be assured we are appropriately distanced? Will there be things between us?
So there have been several. So, so first of all, as the moderator, I have complete control over the, the meeting. So I will, I, it's my responsibility to make sure that everything is, that the strictures are all in place. Now, one thing, this is actually an important point. Masks will be strongly encouraged. I cannot require masks to be, to be worn. And some voters may show up who are not wearing masks. What we plan to do is to set aside one room for people that don't want to wear masks in the meeting so that they can participate in, as their voter right, but.
And it won't be the auditorium, I'm assuming.
No, it will not. And to give you the level of thought that we put into this, we've even gotten the, the rate at which the air is circulated in the rooms so that we know that we're within CDC guidelines and things. So we've thought, so, so we know that all of these spaces sort of meet the requirements for social distancing and for all of the rate of recirculation and all that kind of stuff.
So Nate, can I just jump in? Why can you not require masks?
Because a voter can participate because they want to. It's, it's their right to be there and.
I guess, I mean, I, probably under the governor's latest, I think December 19th, new regulations or guidelines came out. And we require our students to be masked all day.
That's true, but this is, this is a deliberative session, which is part, the first part of an election. So you cannot prevent a voter from participating if, if they're not wearing a mask, if they don't want to. That is, that is simply the, the reality. So I will make sure that there is a space set aside for people that don't want to wear masks if they choose not to.
And will you have them available in case they didn't bring one?
Yes, yeah, we will do that. Yep. But that will not be in the main spaces because in the, just going by the number of people that voted in the election that weren't wearing, wearing. But that will not be in the main spaces, because in the, just going by the number of people that voted in the election that weren't very wearing masks. Out of all of the many people that voted in person, only about maybe ten to twenty didn't wear masks. So. I don't expect we'll see, you know, five, more than five or or five to ten people, but. It is their right to be there and their right to participate. I will make sure that they have a sequestered space in which to do so.
So that'll be one, one whole of the four rooms?
Yeah, we have a, we we identified a a location for it.
Okay. And so when you're talking twenty five people in a room, is that one of our standard classrooms at Sohegan High School?
Yes.
And so that's enough for socially distanced?
Yes.
Okay. And then when it comes to the school board being present for their presentation.
Oh, yeah, you asked about what about where you will be.
Yeah.
So. There have been several different meetings held in the auditorium successfully. Where there are tables, individual tables set up at a distance from each other. Along the edge of the table or or should be edge of the stage or on the stage. What we'll probably do is have you just in front of the stage at about ten tables that are set. They're basically the tables from the the lunchroom. And you'll have each, each one of you will have your own table. They'll be, you know, six feet apart. There'll be one podium on, or to be lectern on stage. I'll be standing at the lectern. We're gonna use the large screen that comes down and project. All of the slides as well as all of the. Feeds from each of the Zoom cameras in the other rooms on that screen. And we tested all this and it works.
Will the school board and the administrators, including yourself, be required to wear masks?
I think that's. That's a question for you, actually. It's your, it's, I mean, it's my meeting, but it's your, your decision how to, how to. Where would you want there?
So that, so does that mean they're not? So if I want to wear a mask, but someone, another school member doesn't, they don't have to?
Well, that that's for you guys to work out.
Board, we can come to a consensus.
Okay, so, okay, I was just a little confused if it was an individual.
Though in the auditorium, it will be, I mean, there is adequate space between the first, I think it goes back. Five rows from where you will be sitting, so it'll be some distance away. But. I think that, I mean, I'm assuming that you will all be wearing masks, except when you're speaking, but. But that's, that's for all of you to work out.
Okay, and just for.
I'm sorry, one other thing to to add. So the, the school district lawyer. Will probably attend by Zoom. Because he will be, he or she will be traveling in theory between like six different meetings that day over the next couple of days. And it's probably too much to ask that they be there in person. So if we need them for the discussion, they will be there at by Zoom. But since they are not a a registered voter, it's not a, it's not an issue.
Okay, got it. And then just for the families who have kids at Sohegan, the day, I'm assuming after we are done, there'll be adequate cleaning done.
Yeah, and that will happen each night. Our meeting, the Sohegan meeting. The Amherst, I'm sorry, the, the, yeah, the the town meeting. And and it's, yeah. So that they, we had all the janitorial staff there to talk about it and so on, so.
Okay, thanks. Terry.
All right. So first I want to say thank you because I know that obviously a whole lot of work has already gone into this plan. And I think it sounds like a really good one that takes into account everyone's comfort level and safety. And so thank you for that. I will say that I have run a tournament in that school and that's a great wing. Because it is sort of separate. It has its own entrance. Actually, it has two ways to get in. And it has a lot of double classrooms. So I'm assuming you're using the double classrooms.
Yeah, we would.
Spread people out.
We keep the partitions, so we separate the spaces, but like I said, there'll be. Deputized moderators in each room. And one of the things that we want to make absolutely sure is that, that the meeting. Is. Is disciplined so that each of the deputy moderators has control of the of the microphone in each and. You know, they'll raise their hand electronically so that I will know who who to call on next. It will just go through one at a time.
That's a great idea. And they each get their own Cal prod. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm in a mood tonight. I don't know what the deal is. So. How about for any, I plan to be there in person. I'm comfortable doing that. I know that. If there is a board member who was not. Did not feel it was safe for their family for them to physically be there. Is there an ability for them to be involved without physically? I mean, they wouldn't be able to vote on our own things, which is understandable. But.
So the, the, we talked at length about that and we also got, I think, a legal opinion on it. I'll defer to Steve on that because I. There was a lot discussed and and I don't want to be inaccurate, but the. There is a stipulation that if you, if the board member can't physically be there. They can deputize someone to be to be in their place. So at least one of the 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 board of selectmen won't be able to attend or likely won't be able to attend. And they will deputize someone to to fill in. Our, our decision was that it's not appropriate for a board member not to attend. But to in person, but to attend by Zoom. They are a registered voter. They have to be part of the discussion in person. And if it's not possible to attend, there is the option to to deputize someone to attend for.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
All right. So Nate, to kind of bounce back to one of something that came up during Ellen's questions. Obviously, as a board, we can come to consensus and we can, you know, as a board, we can say, all right, all of us, we want all of us to be wearing masks. And we can make the decision for administrators on how to handle it. Are we allowed to require you to wear a mask? Your meeting, can we say, Nate, this is our deciding thing. If you're not gonna wear a mask, we're not doing this.
Well, I was planning to wear one, yes. Obviously, the masks interfere with microphone and sometimes I may need to lower it in order to be understood properly, but that was my plan, yes.
Okay. Can we try to keep masks on while speaking unless we're told that it is causing an issue? Okay. All right.
And Beth, I'm confident that the administrative team is. Fully comfortable and actually would be very uncomfortable if any of us came without masks. So you can count on the entire administrative team being masked.
I, I figured it wasn't gonna be a thing. Um, okay. So. Does anybody else have any more questions for Nate on this? Okay, seeing no digital hands raised. Oh, I actually have all of you on screen. I don't see anybody's physical hand raised. So the plan is tonight, because we, you know, the Board of Selectmen has seen this. And have voted. The sooner we can get out the information on how we're hosting deliberative is the the better, especially given the current circumstances. So I would like, Terry, do you have a question? Are you?
One question, this is just for deliberative, not for public hearings. Public hearing entirely remote and then, okay.
Okay. So. Let's, do we need a motion or is it just a? Nate, I don't know if you know the answer to this, how the Board of Selectmen handled it. Do we need a motion on this or is it just like a general vote? I guess a motion's better for any.
Yeah, I think a motion's better.
Okay, um, so. Let, since really the question is hosting it in person. Because we all know what the option is if we decide to hold it remote. We, we know kind of how that is handled. So can I have a motion to host an in-person deliberative this year? Terry, can I have a second? Second, okay. Any further discussion before we vote?
Beth, I wonder if you want to include in your motion, like as outlined in the proposal. And presented by our moderator.
That is a wonderful idea. So Terry, can you modify your motion to say that?
Yes, I please, Danae, modify my motion to be much more fully formed and appropriate. As suggested by Christine. I sound, I sound wonderful. That's exactly what I'd like to say.
So let's roll call that. Tom.
You're on your yes.
Terry.
Beem, yes.
Ellen.
Brujan, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. So. Nate, we get to see you in person. The mask, I think that this is a discussion that we need to have as a board. I, you know. We've already talked about administrators, Nate plans on wearing a mask. I would only feel comfortable if all the board members were wearing a mask. And especially if we're in the auditorium, I think we need to set the example. So is everybody okay? And plan to do that? Yeah. I didn't think it was gonna be a thing. So, okay.
Hey, Beth, can I just take the mask conversation just one step further? Considering that we're all gonna be lined up, I know there'll be six feet in front of us. Is there any option to get some Plexiglas in between? We can maybe look into it, just a suggestion. I don't think we need an answer, but maybe we could be working on that.
I think we're lined up with significant, and I'm wondering if we're even gonna be staggered.
If we're at lunch tables, maybe not, but Nate just said about six feet, so I.
So I don't remember how many rows back it is, but it has been done already in this configuration. And it was more than enough space.
I think she's worried about sitting next to me. Or, yeah, like not literally me, but like.
Sit next to anybody.
I know, and that's, I meant, I don't. Really worried about.
This would not be, exactly. You're right there and someone else is right there. Yeah.
We'll put you on the end, Ellen. You can be like on the aisle.
I'll be the end unit.
Go ahead, Christine.
I think we do have Plexiglas Meg actually would probably be able to weigh in on that. Some was purchased for different purposes and different reasons. And I think we have it accessible if we feel we need it and certainly it's up to to Nate if. He feels that that, you know, is something that would be of value if we aren't like in a full six foot any way apart. In any direction.
So. We had a, we had it set up to 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 see if it worked and and frankly, the gap was like. I think it was almost ten feet between each table, so. But if that's the, what is required for your level of comfort, we can. I, I, I assume that there's plenty of Plexiglas we can find.
I just would have to check and see if we'd have to pull it from other buildings besides just Sohegan. We ordered it for, you know, speech paths, school bikes, things like that.
Meg, I'm happy to help with that and I'm happy to clean it when we're done.
Okay, so I think we're all good. And I will make sure Josh is up to date. I know he actually. I had had most of, you know, I gave him the basic information of what the options were gonna be, so he is up to date. But I'll make sure I update him with all the information going into this as well. So, okay, so I think that's it, Nate. If you want to sign off, you can.
Okay. Please email me. We get together and discuss logistics.
Great. I think I have, I'm pretty sure I have your email, so I'll make sure I do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night all.
Okay, so moving on. We're a tiny bit behind, but I think that was really important information. We started a little bit late. So. Vote on the final budget. This is not the vote that will show up as, you know. X for, X against on the voter packet. That doesn't happen until after deliberative. But this is the vote of this, you know, this is the budget we're gonna be presenting at public hearing. And this gives the ways and means some information on where we're going with all this. So. Michelle did update the spreadsheet. Over break. But she did update it to include everything that we talked about last meeting and everything like that. Really quick, Michelle, when we go into it, there's two new, I, there's. Two just like documentation changes that you made. They, when you copied down because it ended in a number, it looks like we're hiring somebody for the next nine years. In two different spots. So if you can just. Edit that. Just so that nobody else has a question. It's Lindsay and.
I see it. I am changing that right now. Thank you.
So the end result. So she also made the list of everything that I had, you know. In the spreadsheet I had sent her, which ended up being. A hundred and, it was a little over a hundred and seven thousand dollars in cuts that we had already talked about in one meeting. And then the cut, the teacher, the robots. Recycling and a few other things. So the end result is the proposed budget is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over default. Which is one point five percent over default. Right?
Yep.
Okay. Just making sure. We, it looks, is that seven hundred and seventy thousand what we've cut from the original proposed?
Yes.
Okay, so as a board committees, everything like that, we have removed. Seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the original proposed budget that was proposed by the superintendent. And the overall increase from last year's is five point five, five point four percent technically. Does anybody have any last questions? Ellen.
Oh, and I apologize, Beth. I probably should have emailed this question to you earlier. I just, I had a thought when we're talking about the new superintendent, assistant superintendent curriculum person. Who's gonna work between the middle school and the high school. Could that person possibly take over the roles that our coaches have? I know one of our coaches is currently a teacher this year to potentially help with that middle school staffing challenge. Because this person's gonna be in a new role, maybe we make this new person's responsibility what the coaches were doing. So if we take those coaches and move them, or I think there's two. Am I correct, Christine?
There's only one coach currently teaching this year and it's one coach across the entire Amherst School District. They were dedicated to AMS, but they were actually pulled the first year because of our kindergarten. Challenge we had, you might, some of you might remember who are on the board. We had way more kindergarten students than we had planned for. So we actually had pulled him his first year. He was a coach, yes, last year. And then COVID hit and then this year he's a teacher again. So he has been pulled as a teacher two out of his three years with us. So it is, Ellen is a great question. It's really hard to know because we haven't been able to fully dedicate him to that coaching role. And normally that coaching role was meant to be a non evaluative role where there's a lot of like deep collaboration and work with teachers. While I think the assistant superintendent will be more embedded, will be able to be more embedded because there'll be two of us in the schools. I don't know if they'll be able to get to that deep level. It is, it is a good wonder, though.
Yeah, I ha- I have to throw it out there. I mean, I know we were trying to get pretty creative in our last meeting. You know, we're increasing a little bit around the assistant principal superintendent position. I wonder if this is a way to kind of streamline that a little bit. And I know this coach and I know he's amazing and I know everybody loves him as a teacher. Too, so, and if we haven't been able to utilize that position for now, you know, for one of the three years. I guess I question the necessity of it. So I should have thrown this out when I had the thought and I apologize for it and I rethought about it today. So I just wanted to throw it out there.
Um, anybody else?
Michelle, we still don't know health insurance numbers, correct? Those will come in, is it in March, the final numbers? We know that there's a maximum increase, but we don't know the actual increase, correct?
That's correct. We have a guaranteed maximum in there at this point.
That's still just a placeholder for what it could end up being.
It could be as high as a guaranteed maximum, but it certainly could come in lower than that as well.
Sure.
But it won't be higher than that.
Correct.
Terry?
So I think just to piggyback on on Ellen's thought is that for one, it, it is an SAU position that's coming in. And so to speak for all of the SAU and how they would utilize that position, I think is presumptuous of us as a single district to say, we want to very intensively use it to replace a position that we, we already have funded and that we already are supposed to have functioning. Are pulling somebody into a teaching position, we may choose to keep him in a teaching position. He may be willing to. And I agree, he's fantastic at that. And, and there's, I mean, we gain no matter what, but helping, helping our teachers to more efficiently do what they need to do and to more richly serve our students, I think that's the plan. If he's able to do it, what the intention is, brings a lot of value as well. And it brings a lot of consistency and it brings something that I think it would be hard at the SAU level for somebody who's sharing across campuses to do it as well. So I think that it's a year by year thing that we look at our enrollment numbers and see where it makes sense to put everyone. And that's something that we ask our administration to do. So I think we can throw that out there and we can make the request to say, hey, keep this in mind. And we love him in the classroom, but I think it's, it's up to them for where they put bodies according to the challenges of each year. So I don't know if it's our place to tell them where that can happen and how that can happen. That's just my thought.
Thank you, Terry. All right. Um, so if nobody else wants to make any additional recommendations to change, remove from the budget. Can I have a motion to accept this budget as the budget that will be presented at public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ellen. Can I have a second?
No, second.
Okay, Tom. And let's roll call. Tom?
Got your yes.
Terry?
Im yes.
Ellen?
Virginia yes.
And Kuzma yes. Okay. So moving on to the big topic for the night. Um, the public hearing planning. So we have, Michelle was kind enough to go in and start the public hearing slides. They're definitely not as robust as they need to be, you know, because it's the start. We're going to put it together and then, you know, make changes, edits, you know, rough changes in that's conceptually. And then once we're broken out, we can make more detailed changes and edits for whoever we're speaking to that if needed. Um, we are getting, JFAK will be sending us some of their slides. So we don't need to worry about that immediately. So first, what we're going to do, we're going to kind of hit this three different steps. Step one is we're going to look at the big picture without actually looking at the slides. We're going to quickly look at the big picture and each of us list, you know, one or two key things that you think need to be presented as part of our public hearing. Keep in mind, we only have an hour. But also obviously we're going to present the numbers. So it's more of the other key things, you know, talking about enrollment, talking about test scores, something like that. Um, I'm not saying those have to be on there. I'm just giving examples. So what I'm going to do is just go through, I'm going to call each of you once, give one key thing. Christine and I are jotting them down and then we'll make sure that they are in the presentation. If somebody already says what you said, come up with another idea, pass, you know, whatever. But this way we can just kind of get a few really absolute key things out there. Terry, I'm going to start with you. Sorry.
From what I would like us to do is to keep it as streamlined as possible because we have some big things to talk about. And we have some big warrant articles, obviously, that are going to take a lot of the, the oxygen in the room. So I think that the more straightforward we can keep the budget discussion, the better. And one of the key areas that I would like to highlight that's really come up to me in the last week or so is really the depth of our bench, right? If you think about sports and who you can put on a field, the way that we've been able to do our pods and to keep all of our students safe this year and the ability to reconfigure and, and have, even with confirmed cases, there hasn't been spread. Our plans have worked has been the value of our staff has been able to turn on a dime and fill positions they don't normally do. We've had specialists being teachers. We just have really had so much flexibility because of the quality of our staff. So I just feel like being able to highlight that in a meaningful way, I think is appropriate this year.
Tom?
Well, I would say that I think we need to highlight that there's a big chunk of an increase coming in retirement and benefits packages through the state retirement system. I think that's important to get across there because those are numbers that we don't have an impact on.
Okay. Ellen?
Continued class size challenges.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to figure out if it's important to mention it now or important to mention it during deliberative. But I think explaining to the community the depth that we went into, you know, the options that we had out there in order to actually try to cut the budget, which would have given us really unfavorable outcomes, which is why we ended up where we did because we wanted to bring it down more. And then when we looked at the reality of what that meant, I don't know if bringing it up during deliberative or here is important, you know, is better. But I think at least touching on it a little bit is something I'd really like to say. All right. Does anybody have one more big thing that they see as being important?
Technology?
Yes.
Well, and I think also to piggyback on, on Ellen, really that through line of as a board, we have set some some long-term goals, some shorter term and some kind of in-between. And how, how does this budget speak to those ongoing goals like class size? That, you know, we keep chipping away at it. We keep trying to get a little better. And each year we conservatively add what we feel like we can reasonably add to move closer to that goal. So I think just showing that those goals matter and, and that they're really what guides us as we make actual dollars and cents choices.
Okay. All right. Ellen, do you have one last one?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, great. So now what we're going to do is Michelle's going to go, Michelle, do you want to share your screen? I have it. I can also share my screen.
Yeah, I'll send it to folks and then I can show my screen as well.
Okay. Um, and then what we'll do is we can go through slide by slide and just make sure that some of those key points are in there. We can say, you know, this makes sense to put Ellen's point, this makes, you know, put Ellen's point in this location. We can also change orders around if we need, if there's any slide that's in there. She did take last year's presentation, brought it forward using this year's numbers. So we can, you know, say, ah, this one, it doesn't work. Let's delete it. Let's change it. But we also don't want to spend hours working on this. So the more fine tuning of slides will happen more by the people that are presenting those specific sections. But while keeping in mind that we only have an hour for public hearing.
We have an hour to present, but we, it's not just an hour to present, it's an hour to answer questions too. So we really have, probably have 30 minutes to present and get it out there. But if we're going beyond that, then we're not doing a good enough job explaining what we have in there and why we have it in there.
Yep. Um, exactly. And deliberative is always longer. So, you know, public hearing is the initial. And, you know, we learn from questions and we kind of tend to answer questions within our presentations during deliberative. But yes, that is a great point. Tom?
Did everybody get the file share?
Yep.
Okay. Right. So again, I just started with last year's presentation and had gone through and kind of highlighted that the slides to note those that need to be reviewed and updated. But we'll, we actually have two separate meetings. So it will start with the bond hearing, which will be opened first, must be opened, provide the information and then close the hearing. So I have just a cover page for that. And I wasn't sure who was going to be giving the presentation specifically. But I can take information and drop it in here so that it'll be part of the larger presentation. And then we can easily move from the bond hearing presentation. Then right into the budget hearing presentation.
Okay. So just thanks for reminding me about that, Michelle. Once we figure out the flow of the presentations, you know, of this whole presentation, we'll go back and figure out the who. We'll do it so it's segmented in a more logical way. So we'll figure out the who after. Thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome. And because we don't know exactly when this budget hearing will start, it depends on the endpoint of the bond hearing. It's been posted as immediately following the seven block bond hearing. Then these tabs, these slides are the slides that were included in last year's non-financial data. So I'll go through these quickly so you can just take a look at them. I'm not sure if Adam's going to want to put any specific slides around that. And Christine, I don't know if you have anything curriculum related that you'll want to have in here. So I've kind of highlighted these in yellow, just in terms of, you know, what, you know, to think about what we want to do with those. The math slide, science.
And it's a little challenging. We didn't have spring testing last year. So we do have, certainly have some NWA results, but you know, the OECD PISA, while it's really exciting, I feel like we, we did that last year. So I'm happy to work with Beth and with Adam and kind of decide what student achievement data or information we might want to include in there.
And I can kind of go through this, you know, do a one through on this so people can get a sense of what was there and have that in their heads. And then we can go back and decide what pieces you want to take out and which ones you want to tweak to keep. Then financial performance, updating a slide here. Talked about the classroom structure and how instruction has changed over time. Skill sets that are going to be needed in the future. A math problem. The new structure of teamwork. The beliefs. And then we went into the summary. So this slide has been updated, but I would want, I would ask for, you know, some input regarding the budget goals and what you would like to have listed there. These warrant articles have been updated to reflect what would be on the warrant. This information has been updated to reflect the numbers that the board just adopted. You know, I've put the most current information. Proposed comparison by fund. Roll forward from the current operating budget, the areas of budget responsibility, the change in those areas to get to the total change of the budget and the proposed FY22 budget. This was a slide that was in there last year. So I had updated that. This has not yet been updated. This has not yet been updated, but we would have information on staffing. Specific items that might want to be called out in the budget. This is last year's slide. The default calculation, I would put in a calculation for FY22 similar to what was included in the superintendent's memo. So it would be the same format, but updated numbers. And default notes. Special warrant articles. So we would have a list here of the warrant articles that were mentioned in the other slide. Talking about the tuition, the lease agreement and facility reserve. And then I would also note again here that the bond article would be an art, a warrant article on the budget as well. I mean, on the ballot as well. Then we had information about the five-year project totals. Again, more about that warrant article. So all those slides would need to be updated and then getting to a summary, if you will, financial summary. And then that was the end of the presentation. So we can go back and folks can, you know, comment on what slide you might like to definitely keep, some that you might want to take out, or if you have, you know, others that you'd like to add.
Michelle, I feel like you can skip over kind of that overview intro sort of slides and Adam, Beth and I can work on those pieces. And certainly any board member who wants to weigh in and say if there's something that they feel is really important about that, we can certainly keep, include, or make sure we share, but you know, I'm happy to dive in after that part if it's more effective.
So would you say slides four through seven, like what are you including in that range?
Through slide 16, I think we need to revisit and maybe make some changes too.
Okay.
Beth, do you agree?
Yes.
And then, oh, probably 17 also, because those were kind of SAU-wide like goals and part of our SAU-wide vision. So that is probably also included in that kind of overview that Adam, Beth and I can work on.
Yeah, Christine, I know that I definitely heard feedback from the public that yay, it's great that we hold our own on a world stage. That's nice. But they really want to see how do we stack up more in the US and more specifically in New Hampshire even. So I would say, because NWA is one that's important to us, that, um, and NWA is, is a worldwide measure as well, to be fair. But I think that focusing a little more on things that are more local in nature for testing. Um, that makes sense. And I would like to make sure that I don't think we need the deep dive of how do we teach today? So those were great and it was appropriate last year. I don't think we need to go to that level of detail. But don't lose, from my previous point, don't lose the through line of what are the goals that still exist, you know, we're still working towards these SAU level things and how do we fit in that? And then as our specific district, you know, what are our goals? So I would, I think that that would play nicely together and is important to still highlight.
Thanks, Terry.
Um, okay.
So we have one more. Can we add some of the we've really enjoyed in the principals reports and in the superintendent, we've enjoyed seeing the pictures of some of the things that have been occurring in our facilities, some of the improvements that have been started. I think that highlighting some of what's going right in facilities as we're going to segue to what still needs to happen and what the long-term plan is, I think would be appropriate because it's something that obviously we've talked a lot about and we're going to be talking a lot more about. But how, how are we spending the money we already have to do what's in our, you know, needing to happen? And in highlighting some of that.
I don't know if we've actually pulled from the capital reserve fund though, because that was I don't know if we've actually pulled from the capital reserve fund though, because that was supposed to, like, we weren't supposed to pull from it the first year. So we could bank a little bit and then pull from next year.
And I think we're going to have to explain why we still have it at the same time that we're asking for a new facility. So I think that some discussion of of those types of projects, both, both the smaller and the larger, I think, is going to be, absolutely needs to be part of the discussion. The, that facilities in general is going to be very, a very big part of the discussion.
Um, okay, so going back to the other key things, you know, the five or six key things that we called out at the beginning. You know, class size isn't necessarily after page eighteen, but at least I don't think so. Um.
Was that class size slide?
That on, on page slide twenty-two.
Yep. Um, so we can go into a little bit more detail. You know, once we get the updated numbers and things like that, we can explain a little bit more detail. Use that as part of, because we did vote to include the funds for two new teachers. Include that as part of the discussion. So. And then.
And Beth, I'm just wondering, is it sufficient just to have this slide with current year, projected year? And whoever's speaking to it would be speaking to, hey, we, we have included two additional teachers. This is why, and this is our rationale. So was it really just updating the slide and we're set? Whoever would be presenting would be able to kind of fill in those notes? Or do you feel like there's something else that needs to go in?
I think that I think they, for the most part, this slide can probably cover it, although for the projected, we're not using Steve's projections, we need to make sure that's edited. Um, I think that whoever ends up talking about the enrollment and classroom sizes, they might, you know, w- once they start writing whatever it is that they're going to say, they might ask for an edit or something, just to help be a part of telling the story. But I think typically in the past, we've done a decent job of, this kind of speaks for itself. Yeah, kind of a thing, but yeah.
Um, I think maybe one additional slide.
This worked last year with just this one slide.
You think so?
Yeah, I did this part last year. So I, for me, it worked on that, whether or not I do it again, it's a different story. But for me, it worked because you're, again, you're limited on time, but there's only so many ways that you can say, we want smaller class sizes. Continuing goal of ours, we added two last year, we, you know, we're looking at two more this year and brings these numbers down to this, 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 so.
Yep.
Okay, that's fair.
And then we, I think we should definitely have a slide probably after this about the technology. Although maybe not, because then maybe it should be after the proposed staffing changes, but it should be within this section about the technology. What our current technology looks like in the district. You know, how many of our devices are more than five years old? How, you know, because he, we have some of those graphs are provided for us. So I think having that, you know, show that we are so outside of the effective technology realm. And, you know, so we definitely included technology as one of our key goals in this, when we were doing this budget.
Michelle, I'm wondering if you can just make a slide for technology and even leave it blank?
Yeah.
Well, I think, so what we did was we had identified items that are included in the proposed budget. And I think that becomes one of those items. And we can certainly make it a separate, you know, its own slide. Is, are you still able to see the, the screen? So I may not here include notes regarding technology, but we might want to bump that out to be its own slide. Like this stuff is going to come off of here, the AMS Clark Wilkins information.
I think with the information we have about technology, I think it needs to be called out on its own separate slide. I mean, we can have a slide, depending on flow, we might be able to have a slide, you know, just that recaps, you know, we're covering technology. We're covering, you know, two new teachers as part of this budget. Um, so we could do that. But I also think that technology needs its own slides, because I think we're going to use some of the graphs that Alex created for us.
Would you also want to highlight the new plan for fifth grade device buying?
Yes, that should be included in the technology information. Because although we have to budget for the cost of it, because you can't include the revenue from the technology fee. You know, so it's not like it reduces the budget, but it does reduce, it will end up, it's, you know, on the other side, reducing what we need to ask for taxpayers. So I think definitely, good point, Terry.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Christine, for coming up with it.
Yeah.
Michelle. Nice job, ladies.
Okay, and then we've got the increases because of state retirement. That kind of.
I think that should go, we should do staffing, the enrollment, those two, first two things. Then you do the, the teacher, because it's a teacher contract that goes up this year. And it's the, it's what you're three out of four. And then it's also the retirement system, that can be one slide. And then you can go into technology, because that just highlights four or five, or three or four of the different big nugget items. And then you go into default, and then you go into your bond articles or warrant articles from there. It's kind of how we laid it out last year.
Yep.
I agree.
I'm wondering, Michelle, you might remember in some years, we've done like a pie chart that actually shows the different proportion of the budget that goes to each area. I don't know if that pie chart would match these things, or if some of these are just goals and wouldn't really stand out on that. But I, or if we just want to talk about, you know, almost your slide of the items included in the proposed. And those are our bigger items that we want to make sure we talk about.
I think if you look at slide twenty-one, Christine, that has proposed budget calculation. It's a, it's a change of the area by budget responsibility. So that may be a good way to articulate that where you see facilities, just looking at last year's salaries and benefits makes up five point six percent of the increase. But then you're, I'm sorry, this is all this year's numbers. You know, that's where a big number of the increase, and you can break it down after that. So it's not a pie chart, but it lists out the different things with different funds and everything too.
And these are the, the current presents for.
Yeah, I realized that after I was looking at it, I'm like, oh, those are oddly similar.
Um, but I think the salaries benefits, that includes, that's not just the changes. You know, that's not the difference between the default and the proposed.
Well, that's not, that's not that piece, but.
No, that includes new teachers, it includes retirement, includes benefits, it includes contracts, all that stuff goes in there.
Right, so from this, we can go into talking about the enrollment and class size. And then the staffing information, as you had suggested, Tom. And then from there, the, the benefits, New Hampshire retirement changes.
So I wonder, is the pie chart that y'all are thinking of, maybe the one, I know that especially when I joined Ways and Means my first year, it was, it was a real wake-up call to me to look at kind of how much is set in stone and how little kind of area there is that's in play really. Like we can, we can nickel and dime and try to whittle it down as best we can, but there's really only so much out of the entire that we can really you know, that, that's discretionary.
Yeah, I think that's the pie chart I'm thinking of, Terry, when Christine.
And they do think it's super effective. So I think that maybe when you, when you introduce default, you say, okay, you know, here's, here's the equation. But then here's the chart of kind of, here's what we're committed to, and here's the actual discretionary that we could have gone one way or the other. And here's why we decided to go this way. On the ones that we do have some control.
Yep.
Um, because I agree, I think that, I think that's always a really, when you're not in the middle of it all the time, is a great reminder. And it's, it's really sobering of, okay.
It's probably in our deliberative slides, which is why I'm thinking of it, but I, I do think you're right, it could be helpful here too.
Yeah.
Well, and deliberative and public hearing are two sides of the same coin, right? It's almost like a dress rehearsal for, you're, you're not going to be introducing a whole lot of usually new information at, at deliberative. Public hearing is really where you're laying it out to usually a smaller audience. And then, and then you get more people at public hearing because they get to actually vote. But I don't imagine our message will change much.
I don't, I don't see in, in this working document. There's usually a, you start with the current year's budget, calculate up to the default. And then there's a second tab that shows from the default to the proposed, the major areas of change. And that's not on here, so I can add that after the default notes.
I think that's pretty essential.
And then did you want a, a pie chart after that? I'm not sure. Do these charts get to what you're trying to, to talk about, Terry? Or are you still looking for a pie chart?
I mean.
I think the pie chart visit, the, you know, it's, 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 it's hard to concentrate on these slides when we're going through them. As, you know, not as quickly as we are, but yes, as quickly as we are. And I think to Terry's comment, the pie chart really captures it. I feel like year to year, everybody seems to have it in there. So I would suggest, yes, it's just a really good visual.
It is, and it's, and it's, I think that, um, you can have budget amnesia from year to year. And it's a, it's a very timely reminder to say, we are doing our best and we are still taking care of the pennies because they matter. But here's the dollars that we can't quite, they are what they are.
Okay. Um. All right, so we've got that. And then, of course, while we're doing all of this, we need to keep in front, keep in mind, Terry's initial thing was keep it streamlined.
You know, as I'm asking to add things and it's like, but keep it short.
I think there's a lot we can delete.
Yeah, to Terry's comment too, about the world where we, I got a lot of feedback from people as well. They just were kind of offended by it. I think we can take it out. And I'm not sure, you know, with the question, you know, the little math equation. It's fun and it lightens things up, so maybe something different, like the pie chart. Light, light colors, put light colors in the pie chart.
Um, I do know that, like, that beginning stuff during public hearing is very quickly glossed over. You know, it's just like, here we go. It's definitely hit a lot harder with a little more time spent to it during deliberative. So I know Adam is very cautious about that part. So.
And is, is, does Adam do public hearing and we do deliberative, or is it the opposite? No.
He did both last year.
We do both, yeah, I mean, like, he, he has a little, quick little presentation at the beginning that he does. You know, he presents those first few slides really quickly, both. And then usually deliberative, it's a little bit bigger, a little bit more information. And then it goes into us.
Okay.
Well, he's like a state of the union kind of quick overview, you know? He says, here's how we're doing.
Yeah, and then we give the gory details.
Here's how much it costs to do that. How much we need to keep doing it.
Yeah, so it's a little bit of both at each. Um, okay, we are. So really, I think we've got that. I'm trying.
So Beth, I have it written down, like the order of things and the big topics. I don't know if that's helpful to jump to next. And I don't know if people feel like we've gone through this enough that, like, Michelle, Beth and I, from all of this feedback, can kind of call this down and get this in better shape and share it out. And then if I share what are our big topics, maybe that would be helpful in deciding who wants to present what.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, because I was like, now I have to figure out how to see what.
So, and I'll share what, what my list is, you know, if you feel I've missed it. And.
Before you start, Christine, I actually have a really quick question on this bond hearing thing. So Michelle, because I've never been part of a bond hearing and we want to make sure we do this properly. Um, so is the bond hearing kind of like its own mini, like, public hearing of sorts? Where we go, we only talk about the bond and all of that? And then is that open to public comment? So it has its own mini public comment section that is only about the bond hearing.
Right.
About the bond. And then we put the bond away and we start talking about the rest of it, you know, the rest of the budget aspects. And then we just quickly mentioned the bond at the end of like, don't forget. Okay, just thank you.
So it comes up again, because on our budget hearing presentation, we have those other slides that talk about the other warrant articles in addition to the operating budget. So it is a warrant article on the ballot.
Right.
So that's why we come back to it.
Yep, okay.
But I wouldn't say you would redo the whole presentation around the bond at that point.
No, just say, and don't forget.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Just before we jump into the other topics, just to give folks an update. The initial warrant draft had the bond as two separate projects. And I know there were some concerns raised about that, given that the projects were so interdependent. When I had first talked with the attorney, Renell, about that, she had said that there was a requirement that the projects be put on the ballot as independent projects so that folks could vote them up or down independently. I went back to her with the comments that were, and the concerns that were raised at the board meeting and stressed how interrelated the entire project is. And that approving one without the other would have a significant impact on the financial status of, you know, the ability to to move forward with the other project. And the logistics of all of that. And so she felt that that was, what I expressed to her was reason enough and support enough to be able to put these as one project. So the warrant article language will be changed. It will be one warrant article. It will clearly identify that there were two projects, but there'll be a single vote up or down. So I just wanted to share that with folks.
Since we had talked about at the meeting, just including them as two bond articles, or two articles, but just making one contingent upon the other. Where if A doesn't pass, it doesn't matter what happens to B.
Yeah.
You need to do that now.
No, you just, they'll be one, one article.
And so I don't know if you guys saw, Shannon just placed something in the chat, and I was going to comment on this. Actually saying kind of the same thing, although our budget is sort of, you know, is like Shannon put it, it's the cost of doing business, right? There's no big fluff, there's no big items we're asking for this year, there's no A and E fees, there's no turf, there's nothing like that. To have a considerable amount of focus on the necessity of this building project to be able to meet our goals that we continue to struggle to meet because of space and, and whatnot. So I just wanted to put my two cents in on that. I don't know if we're going to work on the bond hearing presentation separately next, or if we're throwing it all in together here.
Um, I think a lot of the bond hearing presentation is going to be, you know, we, we've asked JFAC, or at least are asking JFAC. I'm not sure which one, which order it's happened yet, Christine, but if not, this is our official ask from JFAC. You know, we kind of want to go through some of our slides and use some of theirs to create the bond, you know, our bond hearing section.
Okay.
We're also gonna, once we find out if it's legally allowed or not. To find out if at least one of their committee members can help us with that. Are they allowed to be a part of the presentation, Michelle?
I think we should present it because we ran into this issue two years ago where we tried to, where the board tried to get Brian Coogan to present something and it just wasn't, Nate said that that wasn't typically allowed. So I think if we just presented on our own, we're going to be much better off as a board. If we have administration involved, it's different, but I wouldn't say anybody else on the outside is needed or even allowed.
So what about at the public hearing for the bond hearing? Could somebody at JFAK present that? And then at deliberative, we do it?
I think we have to do. I would, I would feel more comfortable with us doing everything just to eliminate any issues with the moderator. If we want to ask Nate about it, but I don't know that we need to. I think that we have the information and we can, we can present it because it's coming from us. Not a committee, so to speak. The committee provided assistance, but it's still us that approved the plan and you know, provided guidance in there and we're the overall ones that have to be accountable to taxpayers on the, that committees, you know, it's not an elected committee. So it doesn't matter what happens to it. It doesn't have any impact on them.
I hear you. So is it okay for JFAK to considerably help like Beth was saying, throw in the slides? Because Shannon, I mean, I have to say Shannon and Amy's dialogue around this and Brian's when it's necessary is just phenomenal. So I would love to capture that.
Yep, I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a lot of slides that they've already created. So there's, there's no reason to kind of recreate the wheel on that one. So I think a lot of it, and once we figure out which ones you know, which slides, you know, we can work with them as well to identify what exact, you know, like this is kind of the information. Here's the slides, that type of a thing. Once we figure that out, we can also figure out what holes need to be filled and where what to kind of add to the slide presentation for the bond hearing. So I'm not sure how much we really, how much time we really want to spend creating that until we identify what it is. So I think a lot of it might be, you know, whichever one of us is or two of us, whatever it ends up being, presenting the bond hearing. Might be doing more of the creating the slides and then we'll be sending out the entire slide deck to everybody to be like, you know, is there anything huge that we're missing here?
If you need a volunteer, I'm happy because, you know, I've been working so closely and we have been talking a lot lately. So I'm happy to work on that.
Is the bond hearing six o'clock and the?
No, Sohegan is six o'clock and then our bond hearing is seven and our public hearing starts right after.
Why wouldn't it be the other order?
Because we always go after Sohegan.
Yeah, that part I understand, but why wouldn't we do the budget first and then the bonds?
I can respond to that. I was concerned about not having a time specific for the bond hearing. Because the bond hearing is very regulated in terms of that process. And I was concerned that somebody might say, well, I didn't know when you were starting your bond hearing. So we put that one first so we could clearly identify that that was happening at seven. And then noted in the public notice that the budget hearing, which people are more familiar with, is immediately following the bond hearing. And we reviewed that with legal counsel and she was fine with that approach.
But Michelle, we could still include an overview of what are our SAU Ed priorities and one of our goals is facilities. At like as the bond hearing, right? We can still give an overview and then.
Oh, yeah.
Go into the, some of the JFAK slides. So I think what both Ellen, you know, what Ellen mentioned and was shared in chat with by Shannon. I think we can still accomplish that even with the structure that we have. We just need to make sure we do some of those intro or SAU wide vision information first. Then get into the bond. Then we might also want to go back to kind of like a if we're going to include things around our state assessments or NWEA and so on, then then when we have our our regular public hearing, we could get into.
I might have misunderstood Terry's question. Was she talking about discussion of the bond as part of the budget public hearing or discussion of the bond as part of the bond hearing?
Well, I guess it's, it's going to be hard to recapture attention, I think. And this is just me thinking about human nature. And I guess it could go either way. If you're going to talk to me about something that's going to cost you know, not at, but but soaring towards a hundred million dollars. And now after I've shocked and awed you with that, now I'm going to talk about the more mundane. You know, here's the money we need to do things day to day. Yeah, seems like less by comparison. That's great. I can see people already turned off like, ah, forget it, you know, like you just want everything. And now you want more, you know, like I would, I would love to kind of stay focused, move through it, keep their attention. Discuss the things that need to be discussed is without them still reeling from the fact, and I know we've already put it out there. It's not like these are surprise numbers. We've already started the discussion, but I still think it's going to be really difficult to talk about the, then, then they just seem like the wrong order to me. That is like, here's our immediate, what we need to deal with. And now to support that, here's what we want to do as this more long term goal. And this reference back to what you've asked us to come back to you with from last year and it's just the order. And so, I mean, if we had to set it time, I guess we could really try to keep ourselves very disciplined and say, all right, it's going to start promptly at eight or it's going to start promptly at you know, whatever, at seven forty-five, seven thirty. I mean, if we need to just have a start time that doesn't move, there could be slight downtime in between. I don't foresee that as needing to happen, but it just worries me to do the really big thing first. It just seems like the wrong order to me. Because I'm still wrapping my head around that. And then all of a sudden, here's this more, you know, daily minutia part.
So the bond is also has to legally has to be the very first item on the warrant article or on the on the ballot. So I can think about that, correct?
I have to, I have to double check the draft, but I believe that Renell had given us feedback on where that gets placed on the ballot.
Yeah, my understanding is it has to be the very first item on the ballot. Which is which was one of the things that was an interesting question about if we did a remote deliberative, because there was another thing that also had to be the first thing on the ballot. So that's the only reason that's in my mind is because of that question.
I, I guess, I, Terry, I hear your, your concerns. I don't know, don't know if there's a way to perhaps wrap some conversation about the budget as part of the bond hearing to say how this is you know, kind of lead into the budget. To say that, you know, the second, right after this ends, we'll be talking about the budget and how this supports, you know, moving forward with the school board's goals through the budget and having this bond project on the ballot as well. The, the ability to change that now. However, unfortunately, that window is closed. The posting notice had to be done quite some time ago to make the date to get it in the paper. So that that has already been set. I think we had that in the draft. There was a draft shared at the last board meeting, I think. As part of the packet.
That's okay, then, you know what? That's it, then it's a done deal. I mean, then it doesn't matter what it doesn't matter what what my personal opinion might be if those are logistics of what we've already done. I guess I was trying to understand why we did it that way. Thank you for explaining it, but I don't want to, I don't want to burn a lot of time. If that's how we've already committed, I don't know if we have the option to change, get to flip the order for a public hearing or not. But if not, then we just have to make sure that our message has a through line, right? That the handoff is, is more seamless and that they really are seeing us supporting each other. And we know they're a big ask, but here's why we're still asking. And, and it's just going to, I mean, and that's part of our message anyway, right? Is we really have to justify where we're coming from and why we think it's, it's important and vital to our overall success. So that's on us, right? To give a clear message, so. Thank you. I appreciate the extra information.
I did have a related question. I guess it applies to both the bond hearing and the budget hearing. I didn't know if there was some value in having a slide that talks about the process and how you arrived at these proposals. Now, there was a significant effort, you know, put forward with JFAK and that worked to get to the bond proposal and then also with the budget. Ways and Means, you know, had a lot of involvement as did, you know, the board members, you know, you guys and reviewing the budget. I don't know if that has any value as part of the presentation.
I think it would. I think you have to have that in there. That it's been a three year project that we, you know, last year we voted or, you know, the town people voted to approve a hundred and fifty thousand for a study. We've done the study. The JFAK has continued to meet. We've, you know, we hired a contractor to start planning this with us and this is what we've come up with for these reasons. I think those are the, and then you go through the actual project slides. I think you're probably talking about two or three slides maybe in there. I think you're, you know, again, we, it behooves us to be quick through this because actually, sorry, two things. If we go through this and we're thorough in this part, we do want to make sure we have time to discuss the budget after because we still have to be done at eight o'clock. But I also think that it means we have to do less of the bond in the warrant article in the back end of this. We just move it up to the front because this is the, you know, this is you know, we can just, like Terry said, use this to highlight, all right, well, you know, we need more room to reduce class sizes. This is why we're continuing to ask for two teachers now. You know, still doesn't get us there. But this is the reason that we're doing it to support the initiatives and the goals that we've approved.
Yeah. All right. So. Okay. I think that a lot of the a lot of the talk and the fine tuning of the flow kind of might be the word tends to follow the person or the people that are talking about these various items. Because as they're going, you know, as they're writing up whatever they need to say, their bullet points, whatever. It, it hits the point where you're like, no, 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 but I need to say that, you know, I need to say this next. So there will be some tweaking with some of it. So I do think we're to the point, you know, we, we've got a decent rough draft down here of what the slides are going to be, what, you know, we've all of us have heard what needs to be said or what we all feel needs to be said in each section. So I think we need to go through and identify how we're going to break this up, who's going to talk about each section. It's been done in various ways in the past that, you know, and by, you know, we've seen that every member of the board gets up and talks about something. We've seen that one board member gets up and says absolutely everything. And we've seen where, you know, it's somewhere in between where it's, you know, parred down to, you know, a couple of people. So as we're going through this, you know, we need to think about it. Last year, I do know we made the decision to not have every single board member speak because of the constant switching in and out, you know, and a different voice and stuff like that can get a little distracting. And be a little bit difficult, especially during deliberative, the constant up and the down is interesting. So, you know, we might want to keep that in mind. So when it comes to the let's see, when it comes to the bond, I think that a lot of that information should be shared by somebody that was, you know, has been involved in this in the past. I know I'm going to throw up my opinion out there. I think Tom should really be the main speaker of the bond hearing. You spoke all about the facilities last year, so you've got it. You did a phenomenal job. You've still been a part of JFAK this year. So I think they, you know, I think it'd be a benefit to have you as part of that. My two cents on it just because of, you know, how you hit it last year. So you know, I don't know if Ellen, you know, if you want to you know, what your thoughts are on that, because I know you were also a part of JFAK. Are you, yeah, you're back.
Yeah, Tom and I can figure it out.
Yeah. Yeah, and even if it's just, you know, the two of you guys together working on the slides and one of you does the speaking, might be better. Terry, you're the only one that's hasn't spoken. Are you okay with that?
You know what? I was going to say, I think that Tom's an exceedingly good presenter. I think that that he's very he sticks to the facts. He's, he explains things well. He has, he has a good tempo. Keeps things, you know, moving, but not too fast. I think that he's, he's an exceedingly good presenter. I think Josh would probably also feel pretty comfortable taking a piece, even as a newer member of the board. He written word, he's really comfortable. I don't know how comfortable he is presenting, and I certainly wouldn't want to speak for him not being here tonight.
Yeah, especially, one, he's not here tonight. Two, he is he has never been on this side before.
That's right. It is his first year.
How comfortable he would be.
I think everybody should get a portion. I think that Sohegan does it really well that way. I think it makes us all look invested. So I think Josh did too.
Christine, what are the main topics?
Oh, sorry. After the JFAK and bond, the main topics we had, you know, there's the intro overview, which Adam will probably do, I would assume. There's the staffing piece. There's enrollment and class size, which can tie together with the staffing. You can certainly put that together. There's the retirement piece, which does also tie in with staffing, but could be a standalone. There's technology. Then there's the default piece. It's what are we committed to that pie chart and then what we actually have control over?
Okay.
And then we have our one other warrant as well. We have
So we also have for warrant articles. We have our, I think it's five hundred thousand, you know, the capital reserve this year.
Reserve is in there, but I think you're going to have your, the bond, the main budget, the default. And then you're going to have the other warrant articles and your, which includes your capital reserve fund. And those last two could be whether if you needed to, but they could certainly be separated as well.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so we've got the capital reserve fund, which is its own separate warrant article. So it should be addressed. Because during deliberative, it has to be addressed separately. And then we have the Mount Vernon tuition.
And the lease agreement.
And the lease agreement.
I think that since one of you that was part of the negotiation for Mount Vernon should probably speak to that one.
I was going to say, yeah, Beth and Beth, maybe the lease should be yours as well because you were mainly involved in that. Tom, probably if you're going to do the big bond, you should probably do the capital reserve as well. And Terry, technology is all you, babe. I'm happy to do class size.
I'm happy to take all or nothing. Last year I didn't speak at all and, and I was perfectly okay with that. It's just to kind of keep it moving and because we have a lot to get through. Having one person set a pace and keep to it can, can be helpful.
Yeah, as long as the pace is good. Yes, I agree.
So I agree that we have so much and so if we want to break it up, I actually disagree. I think that the the follow up bond article for, hey, we still have to pay for what we have right now. And some of our buildings, we know for sure, aren't going away. That may actually be a good place for Josh, because he actually speaks really well to that one. He has explained that nicely in the past. I've heard him explain it really nicely.
Okay.
Good point. I left Josh out. You're right. I'm sorry.
And that's a little smaller chunk.
And Josh is an excellent speaker. We know that.
Yeah, and that's where we used to throw our newbies. We used to throw them on the one that was to get our our special.
Special Ed.
Thank you. I find my mind went blank. Our our special Ed bond article, we 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 got that fund, that reserve fund funded with our with our overage over several years. And so we normally, when we would take turns, that would be the the newbie's place, because it was a little smaller and a little easier. So taking one of the smaller ones, I think, makes sense. But yeah, I I'm okay not, I mean, as much as I like to talk, don't get me wrong. I am totally okay not speaking as well and and I'm good either way.
I think the staffing, enrollment, all of that, it just needs to be an overall budget.
Yeah, can I propose this? So if I do the bond, I think you can have Ellen and Terry, they can do the overall budget or one person can, where they just, they go through. These are the, this is the budget, these are the the categories that they break down. You can have Ellen and talk about class sizes, Terry talk about technology. That wraps up the budget section. And then you can have Beth talk about the default, you can have Josh talk, and then, sorry, Beth talk about default. And then she can either move into the other two warrant articles, the lease and the Mount Vernon agreement, or Josh can go and then Beth can wrap up at the end. And this way, you're just, you're going through all five of us getting, but we're not having these, because the budget, I think, needs to be one thing, because you're not spending a lot of time on every single topic. So it doesn't make sense to make formal changes as opposed to just two people just talking about it. Because I assume we're all at our own seats presenting, as opposed to sharing a microphone, which would seem counterproductive to.
I'm going to talk to Nate about how that's going to work. He and I are going to have a general, you know, we we usually have a general flow for default any, for deliberative anyway. So I'm going to talk to him about that and see what the plan is on that. I think maybe we want to start with this plan for public hearing. And then depending on what he says, if he says no, for whatever reason, formality, we need to get up and speak. We can readdress that and we might make changes on maybe reducing the number of people speaking.
Yeah, and Beth, I know in the past, like Sohegan, they have always sat and not got gotten up.
No, we sit for public hearing, we stand for deliberative. No matter who you are, like all the boards, you sit for public, and then you sit for all the Q and A.
Okay, because I I admittedly have never attended a public hearing. I only go to deliberative, so.
Yeah, deliberative is standing. You go up to the podium and then, you know, whoever's talking goes up and stands at the podium. And they definitely work that way.
So it to to, if I could just speak to the group, it would be my preference that we decide if we're going to go with just a couple of speakers or everybody tonight and just have some consistency there. So, you know, Josh isn't here to represent his voice, but to do it both different ways seems a little counterproductive.
So um that makes sense. What Nate said makes it sound as though he's expecting us to get up and stand and pull you.
So Tom, if if you don't mind, I know I put you in this position before. Are you comfortable presenting everything?
I can do whatever. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just, is public hearing remote or in person?
Public hearings are remote.
Okay, so that's remote only. Remote only doesn't matter. I mean, yeah. I would go along with whatever.
I think to fine tune the presentation, you get to practice at public hearing. We should just have a consistent instead of changing it all up for deliberative. So if 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 we just want some more consistency, I think that's what we did last year, right, Tom?
Correct. We did myself and then Beth did default and a couple of the warrant articles. So I I think we should mix it up. I don't think we should have just one person do the entire thing, just for a different voice. But I think I think you could get away with three people doing it for sure. You can get away with two if you had to.
Yeah, I think that um I, i- if that's going to be the case, I I don't think we should have Josh as a speaker for public hearing, because I'm not sure what's happening for deliberative. I don't think he knows what's happening for, what his personal choice will be for deliberative.
Understood. Okay.
So, you know, sign him on to something now for something that we expect him to do is hard. And having a remote speaker is not the best way to go.
Okay. Yeah, no, and Beth, thank you for bringing that up. I hadn't even thought about that. So, and really, do we, any of us really know what our choices are going to be either? So why don't we just choose two? And why don't we remain consistent with what we did last year?
Okay. Um, yeah, so I typically, as part of deliberative, the typically, the chairperson gets up and says something in the beginning, too, kind of like goals, kind of added to Adam's state of the schools type of a thing. I have to go back and figure out what I did last year. So.
Is Jfac speaking at all?
No, not allowed.
So it, I'm fine sharing a mic with Tom. I, you know, I I trust Tom not to like drool all over the place or whatever. He trusts me to do the same, but no.
You might be able to stand in your spots for.
Yeah, I'll talk to Nate and figure out what the logistics are, but if we want to stick with one or, you know, I agree, there's a lot of stuff this year, especially for deliberative, the detail that's going to have to go into everyone for deliberative. One person doing all of the warrant articles is going to be hard. I, but at the same time, I'm not saying it has to be me. So please know that. So. Yeah.
Do you want to try flushing it out with two and see if it truly lends itself to bringing in a third or fourth voice as you play with the material? Because I I think that any of us are happy to be tagged in as need be. Like, it may make sense, Ellen, because you were both part of early days of of facilities and you've been an active representation from our board on Jfac for the past two years with Tom. I think that you know, it may make sense for you to take a piece of that.
Sure, I'm happy to.
And 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 have that maybe be a tag team on that first part before it goes into, and now let's get through the rest of it.
Comment, maybe Tom and I can decide that separately.
I am not your speedy source, and this needs to be speedy. I am so happy to cheerlead any person that needs it, but I know my strengths and that is not it.
And I would say Tom's strength to, I mean, is definitely the presentation. So.
If we want to do two, Tom, do you want to do Jfac and budget? And I can do the other one, the deep, I can do default. The capital reserve, Mount Vernon and lease. Because I did the capital reserve last year, so.
Beth, I wonder if deep part default is part of budget, though.
We usually separate it out, but we can, Tom and I can also talk about that. Like, as we're kind of doing it, we've, in the past, we've always separated it out, just so that
We have to make it really clear that.
And then, but Tom and I can kind of figure out as well. I don't mind if Tom wants to take that. Whatever.
You guys can decide. I just wasn't sure if
Yeah.
like it was segmenting.
Yeah, it's, we brought that up in the past. And it's inter, you know, it's I think it, it goes both ways, like it it separates it, but at the same time, it's the same. So I don't know. I might also feel like, you know, we might also wait and see, you know, as we're writing our stuff up and kind of flowing through stuff in the next couple of days, what feels natural? If he's like, no, it really feels natural to be like, and guys, listen, great. So. Because I, yeah. But whichever works well, unless, Tommy, you have a specific, you're like, no, I already know what I'm going to say for default or something.
No, default's the only part I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't know, I'd have to just get no more specifics about. But I'm 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 now honestly comfortable doing whatever, so it's it's easy enough to put together the stuff for it. Because again, it's it's about being clear, but being being clear and concise with this, because we only have an hour and that bond hearing potentially, maybe not this round, but definitely deliberative is going to take up some time.
Yeah. Okay. I'll talk to you about it and we can figure it out. All right. Is there anything else? You know, we'll work through this. It is deliberative is about tenish days away. It's next Wednesday. Sorry, just kidding. Hearing is next Wednesday. So we can, you know, we clearly need to start working on this now. You know, so we'll work on it and we'll make some edits to the presentation and stuff like that and get them out to people as it goes. And then.
Remember that Danae needs your your written, even if you might deviate slightly, she needs your written before before you start.
Yes.
Or at the end of your speaking.
Yeah, and for deliberative, we really, it's CJ that needs it too. So they both do it, it's deliberative, so. Okay. So if there's no other questions. Okay, if, sorry, I was just trying to figure out if there's anything else that we needed to deal with. Oh, last public comment of the night. If any other members of the public, we're going to move into our last public comment. Any members of the public have anything to say, please digitally raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Seeing none, I am going we have a we have a last minute we have a last minute non-public that is going to be, is going to happen at eight thirty. I'm going to send all board members the information. Thank you, Terry. So what I'm going to do, Terry actually just mentioned something. We don't so we don't meant, we don't vote on the language of the warrant articles right now, correct, Christine? Because we do that right before, like between public hearing and deliberative. But we do need to really quick, take a look at the five hundred thousand capital reserve and see if we want to ask for it as funds or or pull it from any unreserved fund balance, right, Michelle? Last year, we funded the capital reserve money is an actual just ask to taxpayers. In the past, we've done like the special ed, it comes, it it would come from any leftover money at the end of the year before it was returned to taxpayers. So we do need to figure out which way to do it. I know Michelle sent us right before break, she sent us some information about the amount of money we have left over. Do you remember that, Michelle? Can you pull that up really quick?
I'm trying to get to that.
Okay, if you can do that. So be patient for a second while Michelle pulls up. I'm sorry, I know I had mentioned it earlier and then forgot to give you a heads up right before the meeting. And then I am sending out the board a link to our non-public.
And Beth, I think you'll just want to recess between the end of this board meeting and come back together for your non-public at eight thirty.
Yes.
The adjourn, you could adjourn after your non-public and just recess between.
Yes, that's what, yeah, so that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out just now. So Michelle, did you find? I can, I'm trying to multitask.
Do we do we log off and log back in then for that?
Going to be a different Zoom link.
Okay, so you'll send it to us?
I am, that's what I'm trying to do right now while Michelle is bringing up her thing.
Yeah, I think it was in December eleventh-ish.
I re, I remember seeing it. Want me to try to find it in mine? I get less email than you do.
Michelle, do you remember what the I don't remember what I, it it was, oh, COVID. Because it's also looks at the COVID funds you brought up.
Right, right.
Here we go.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so Terry, you get to share your screen.
Wanted to make sure that I had, because I can have different versions of it, I want to make sure that we're looking at the version that was last shared.
Oh, wait, no, I'm not sure about that. I have something from December fifteenth that says, here's a rest estimate as of twelve eleven twenty. Is that what we're looking for?
That would be it.
Well, here, why don't I, let me just forward it to you real quick, Beth, so you can.
No, I found it too.
Okay.
I'm just trying to send you guys all a link.
Multitask.
And it's not working. Figure it out in a second. Okay, so I will share my screen. Thanks.
I think we can all keep it in our heads long enough to go look for our link for eight thirty.
Okay. All right, everybody can see my screen? Hopefully, I don't get any emails between, while I'm sharing, because I'm just sharing the whole thing. All right, so we have as of eleven, twelve eleven, the anticipated amount remaining at the end of the year. So I I kind of asked, what do, you know, how much does she think we're going to have? What do we have left for COVID funding and all of that? So this was breaking out, broken up that way. And then this number up at the top includes both. So EO is the executive order that allowed us to use last year's unreserved fund balance for COVID-specific expenses. So go down to the, going down to the blue section down here. We had, we got two hundred dollars per student that we used to kind of off, you know, to kind of pay for some stuff that we already had, because we had to use it by December thirty first. But really, what it does is it just kind of adds to if you want to look at it this way, I, or personally, I look at it, is it sort of adds to this overall COVID fund. So it would allow us to potentially be able to return more at the end of the year. Or have it to use for things now, after the first of twenty twenty one. So we had we have gotten CARES funds for the free and reduced lunch program. We got the two hundred dollars per student from technically the federal government, but the state is the one that allocated it. And then competitive submission. Oh, we had asked, there was some grant funding, right, Michelle? Where we, you know, got this but asked for seventy one, so.
Right, we're our expenditures exceeded the two hundred dollar per student funding that was received. And so the state provided a second round of funding, but that wasn't a given. It was a competitive grant, so we submitted a request for an additional seventy one thousand, almost seventy two thousand. But again, those expenditures, the items had to be received and fully in use and expended prior to December thirtieth. So that is not necessarily a hundred percent of your COVID-related costs, but it's costs that were eligible for this particular funding. So we submitted that. So we submitted that and um statewide, they had more requests than they had funding available, so it was prorated down. But we did get, you know, over forty-three, forty-eight thousand of additional um funding to support COVID-related expenditures. So all of those um. Funding pockets for COVID allow us to take the the dollars that initially were gonna be supported through the executive order thirty-eight. Carryover of the reserve money. And, you know, they're being supported through that that funding, so that's, you know, helpful in that it. Freezes up the executive order money that was carried forward, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then looking at. The anticipated, you know, granted, this is all. A guessing game at this point because it's only January. We're halfway through the year, um, you know, our fiscal year. Um. We have, it looks like the revenue, we're short. $11,000 in anticipated revenue, um, but we'll have um right now a projected excess. Of um $596,000 left at the end of the year. That's assuming that nothing happens between now and then. Um, so we need to figure out where that $500,000 that for the capital reserve funding is coming from. Um, do we want to bank on the fact that this number is gonna stay the same or at least go up? Or do we wanna just ask for it? Um, as part of. The um. You know, is is like we did last year, just as tax money.
We have the option of of wording the warrant article so that it says, uh, you know, we we can request up to $500,000. Based out of um the unreserved fund balance at the end of the year. So if we have five ninety-six, we we wanna return some, we can instead take out three hundred if we wanted to do that. Can we word it that way?
Very good question. So. I'm gonna give you two answers. Yes, you can use the language up to, but the up to number is not. Something that you can modify after the fact. So if you say you wanna fund up to 500,000. And you have in excess of 500,000 in unreserved fund balance, you fund 500,000.
Correct, and that's, that's what I would wanna do. I wouldn't wanna go above 500, but I'd want the option to go below if it was 500,001. I'd wanna do 400,000 instead of 500,000. You have to go to 500 if you're over it. Okay.
Yep.
If you only have four hundred.
Three hundred thousand in unassigned fund balance, that's where the threshold, the up to. The up to language comes into play because if you did not say up to and you only had 300,000 in fund balance, then you would fund zero. In in that, it's, so one way is all or nothing. The other way allows you to utilize what's available in the fund balance up to a cap. But you have to put it in.
If you have it.
If you have the excess.
Yeah.
Um, so one thing to keep in mind is, you know, last year, we had. A large unreserved fund balance because we shut the schools down. So we didn't have busing, we didn't have sports, we didn't have. You know, heating expenses, all of that. Um, so we, there was a lot that we didn't have. Um, so we had. A large excess. Um, typically, we don't, you know, in in past years, we've. Ended up with a couple hundred thousand, um, not even half of the 500,000 that we're asking for. Um, so that's just something historical to keep in mind.
So do, so do you want us to decide right now then if we are going to word it as using the unanticipated revenue at the end of the year? Or we're gonna ask the taxpayers to unapprove um the $500,000?
I think we have to decide before we head into public hearing, right, Michelle?
So can we take a vote? Do we need any more explanation?
No, I'm not one hundred percent sure that's correct. We could wait until after public hearing, maybe. I don't know.
It would probably be better to make up minds now.
That's what my thought is. Okay.
And you can straw poll first if you want, if you don't want us to do an official vote until you straw poll. I mean, I know where I am, but.
Um, so, you know, I just, I remember our discussion from last year about, you know, asking for it from. Unreserved fund balance versus asking for it from the, you know, actual tax dollars. Um, it's. When there's excess tax dollars, it goes to, you know, it would technically go to that anyway. Um, is kind of the way it was explained. And then where we don't know how much we're gonna have left, um, it's kind of hard to. Do, you know, plan for that. So that's my thing, but I'm comfortable either way. So what is, you know. Does anybody have a motion? Let's start with that. Does anyone have a motion either way for preference?
Yeah.
The others are fund balance.
Me too.
Unreserved fund balance? All right, works for me. So I need a, so Tom has motioned to use that five, to fund that five hundred and fifty. Sorry, $500,000 for the capital reserve plan.
Up to.
To 500.
Make sure you stick that in there.
Um, from the unreserved fund balance at the end of this year. So, Thomas motioned that. Can I have a second?
Second, or Ellen?
Ellen, okay, roll call, Terry.
Beam yes.
Ellen.
Grigian, yes.
Tom. And Kuzma, yes. Um, so that closes out our meeting for the night. Um, we do have a non-public meeting. I did email everybody the link. Or the board members the link, um, and Christine, and then, um. So I can make a motion to go into non-public because. We're gonna close, go over to non-public.
Email from you.
I sent it just a minute ago.
I got it.
Okay, wait, I'm refreshing. One moment, please.
Um, if not, I'll send it to you again. Um, and then, so yeah. Um, we will, so I will see everybody at eight thirty over in that meeting. Um, I would not recommend joining now. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Bye.
Thank you, bye.
Send it to me.
I need a roll call to go into non-public. Sorry, because we are going into non-public. We're going under um non-public. Uh, A and C.
A, Z or C?
And um, we are, uh, so I need a motion to go in.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Terry.
Do we have to say that we're doing it after a brief recess?
Yes, after a brief recess, we'll be resuming a non-public session at eight thirty and then we will. Um, resume our typical meeting to close it out. Um, there's not any expected.
Okay, beam yes.
Ellen.
Grigian, yes.
Tom.
You're up here, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. All right, so non-public it is. Thank you.